I'd like to call this meeting to order. My first order of business is to go into closed meeting, be it resolved at the Board of Supervisors... Oh, no. Be it resolved at the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2, 3.7, 3.711, paragraph 7. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings from staff members or consultants pertaining to the actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body in consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provisions, provision of legal advice by such counsel. Number one is in motion USA. Two, Old Southwood Road. Paragraph three. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly handled real property for discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Former Blacksburg Middle School property. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, emotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific offices, appointees, or employees of any public body. Adjustment in Appeals Board, Library Board, and Personnel. Do I have a motion, please?
And I believe there's an addendum.
Oh, okay.
In regards, there's a...
Oh, you...okay. Discussion, section 2.2, 3.711. Paragraph five, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Section 2.2, paragraph one, discussion, consideration, interviews of prospective candidates. Well, we already got Personnel on there.
This is to remove it.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, you could accept an amended motion, these changes.
And I would make such a motion to remove the Personnel discussions and to add the discussions in regards to the prospective business or industry with the expansion of existing, or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community.
You make the motion.
I make that motion.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye. Now, we need a motion for the clerk to make it.
So, we go into closed session?
Aye.
The clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
It feels weird.
Need a motion to go out of closed meeting?
Motion.
Second. Have a motion and a second to go out of closed meeting. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Five lines.
Certification of closed meeting whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded to vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section 2.2, 3.711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second for this certification. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
I arrived about 20 minutes late, so for the time I was there, aye.
Okay. Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Five lines.
The next item, items on our agenda is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. During our invocation, we observe a moment of silence to reflect on the business at hand, and once we complete that moment of silence, we will be led in the pledge by County Administrator, Mr. Craig Mattis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Our next item on the agenda is public hearings. The following public hearing was advertised pursuant to law in the New Remo Valley section of the Roanoke Times on July 3rd, 2015, and July 10th, 2015, vacating a portion of First Street Rapid Heights subdivision.
I'll take, Mr. Chairman, we, the county received a request from the adjoining property owners to the area that's shaded, asking if the county would be willing to vacate that right-of-way. That right-of-way is what's called Paper Street. It's unimproved. It's actually not. You wouldn't know it was there if you looked at an aerial picture. It's strictly on the subdivision plat that put that subdivision to record back in, I believe it's the 40s at some point. And so, the road's unimproved. Planning's talked to VDOT. VDOT has no interest in the road for, for expansion to Route 11. You can see that area of First Street, as it was called on the plat, joins Route 11. And so, in order to amend the plat that created that road, the Board of Supervisors has to approve an ordinance vacating the area being requested. The area would then go to the adjoining owners. The one thing involved in this one is that currently there's, PSA has water and sewer in the, in the area in question. So, the vacation ordinance has been drafted where you would approve of the vacation, however, it's subject to the county reserving a 30-foot public utility easement for the water and sewer. And so, the land and fee would go to the current owners of those three lots, but the county would retain a public utility easement if the ordinance is approved. Before you can approve or consider the ordinance, you have to have a public hearing, and that's the purpose of this hearing. So, is there any questions?
Any questions from the Board members?
There's no reason to build that road. Those lots are all, they have access from another, from another road.
Okay, we'll open it up to the public, see do we have any public comment in reference to this vacating this portion of First Street in Rapid Heights subdivision. If we do, you have five minutes, and please come up and address all your comments to the Board.
Hello, I'm Brian Rice. I'm the Realtor for the owner, the seller of some of the property. And so, I try to answer any questions that you do have. The same person owns all the lots that you see here, all the property. Of course, this old unbuilt road is on part of the property.
Right.
And where, the way the terrain lays, that's the property worth that you could actually build on. The rest of it is kind of over bank and so forth. So, we've had a couple of people that's approached us about the property to, you know, develop for commercial use, but with this, this right-of-way through there, it kind of limits what they're able to do with the property. And since it doesn't serve any purpose for the county to hold VDOT to build on it, we respectfully ask to vacate it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Rice?
So, you're saying that road part is the only part they can build on?
No, sir. No, sir. The part that's being vacated is, it's, it's in the front, and it reduces the amount of buildable area.
Okay.
Yeah, they would have to build behind the setbacks or be built on the backside of the property, but, but that front comes into play with setbacks and...
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Thank you.
If anyone from the public would like to speak to the Board in reference to this public hearing on vacating the portion of First Street in Rapid Heights subdivision, please come forward at this particular time. I have no one signed up. I see no one coming forward, so we will close this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to go ahead and add this, since there was no comment in the opposition, to go ahead and approve it?
Yeah, we can add it to new business. If we, I mean, do we need a motion to?
I would still move it.
Okay. Second. Have a motion and a second to add it to our...
Marty, can we do that during public hearing?
We have to cut... Well, he already closed.
Oh, he closed. Yeah.
Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gabriel?
So, this is to add it to the...
To add it.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Five lines.
The next item on our agenda is public address. We have three people signed up to speak on the public address. What we do is, is that you have five minutes, direct all your comments to the Board, and as I call your names, please come forward. Steve Carter?
Hey, everyone. Good to see you again, by the way. Just wanted to say I'm here again to reiterate my opposition in our...
Could you please speak?
Thanks, R.
Yeah, I think...
The rain has started too.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Just here to say I'm here to reiterate my opposition and my neighborhood and community's opposition to the rezoning of the Crozier area for R3. And again, like we, we've stressed the last two meetings, you know, we can understand and even seeing R1 in that district, in that area, but right now, I don't foresee that being anything that would actually be beneficial to any, any of us, okay, from a, from a property value standpoint. I know with the plan, and I'm going to try to delineate from the little things that I said last time, but with the plan, the plan states, you know, economic development in the area to bring, to bring the purpose and the cause to do the R3 in that area. In all actuality, we've not seen that, we've actually seen economic demise in the area. There are less jobs there now than there were in 2007. That being said, it also states in the plan that, you know, looking to pull from the areas of Roanoke City and Christiansburg and Blacksburg, well, people that live in the city in R3 communities on point, you know, little lots with little homes, they look to move to the county and look to move out. They're not thinking about looking to find another little place that's going to be another, basically, you know, city, city-style community. They're looking to move out to buy something large, like that was my, that's me, that's why I left the city. I grew up in Roanoke City and lived on a small lot, and the whole point and cause of me moving out was the plain and simple fact of, you know, I've got a little area, a big, big area, it's open, it's beautiful out there, and that's all we're trying to do at this point. We're trying to do that as well as, how can I put this in another way? I guess there's no other way to put it. Try to help save our property values, which have already seen a decline over the last seven years. That being said, bringing in smaller lots and selling smaller homes is not going to be something that's going to benefit me. I'm, I'm a banker. I do home equity loans and mortgery finances every day, so I know how the banks work and how they look at things. As I, as I said in the earlier meeting, my property now that was purchased eight years ago is not worth, well, you have to have 80% of your value in your home to be able to refinance. I've been there eight years, and I still not able to do so because, because of how they look at things and how they do that. My goal and objective here is not to stop development in the area by no means, but it's just to keep it with the character of the community, with what the people there have grown to love and like. And I just prospectively, thank you for listening to me and let you know that, well, thank you. That's all, about all I can say at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mike Sandborn?
I am Michael Sandborn, and I live at 1330 Crozier Court. I have a question. I did sign up under Public Address section. Will you have a comment period during the old business consideration of the rezoning request for Mr. Creed? There is none there, so then I will go ahead and...
We had that at our last meeting.
Then I will speak to that this evening, but I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to that. As I have listened last week and, three weeks ago in the, in the, in the meeting before to Mr. Creed's representatives address his request, it appears that there were a number of unanswered questions regarding the absolute ability to accomplish their goal to build either six or seven single-family dwellings on, on that piece of property. The most important question for my purpose is the lack of approval of the Department of Transportation for whatever access road there is required for the property. To go forward with the approval of the rezoning with the very real possibility, as Mr. Creed shared with us afterward, of nothing coming of this effort to build any kind of housing would seem to be a significant waste of your valuable time. My concern about the access road is that Crozier Court in this time is difficult on weekend, on weekday mornings to leave for work or return from work from Crozier Road between 6:30 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. during the school year, in addition to the challenge of getting out of Crozier Court, Crozier Road, onto Roanoke Road while school is dismissing in the afternoon. To add an access road in the immediate vicinity of a traffic light and potentially the most hazardous area would seem only to make the traffic all the more difficult, particularly as you visualize someone attempting to enter Crozier Road from Roanoke Road and wanting to turn left into the new residential area. I wonder how long they would be required to wait for a clear area through which to turn. Meanwhile, they would have other entering traffic going on to the school as well as the other residential properties. The traffic leaving, the traffic lineup on Crozier Road in the morning is sometimes quite long, especially with six or more school buses included, as they want to keep on their schedule, as everyone waits for the signal light to change. The afternoon traffic is made all the more challenging when the school sporting events take place. There are vehicles parked all along both sides of Crozier Road, causing concern as pedestrians attempt to cross the street and traffic moves in and out of Crozier Road. It's my feeling that putting a group of small homes in the proposed area is a mistake that might seem to work for a time, but all too soon would deteriorate into houses falling into disuse and subsequently uncared for. I ask you to please hold the possibility of rezoning this property until all the facts and approvals are complete, and you know with reasonable judgment that this, this proposal will work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Call Zipper?
My name's Carl Zipper. I'm 3910 Course 1 Road, Blackburn, Virginia. I'm here to talk about the pipeline, and I appreciate, you know, the Board's concern with this issue of the pipeline. I think we all recognize that the Board's power is limited. We recognize it's a federal power bringing the Mountain Valley Pipeline potentially to Montgomery County. It's all benefits to the county. I think over time, things become clear, and I think one thing that's clear is the pipeline company is not looking out for us, they're looking out for themselves. Therefore, those of us in this county, we need to look out for ourselves. And I'm here to encourage, both to thank the Board for your expressions of concern and your, your time and attention, you've already paid for this issue, but to encourage the Board to identify actions that can be taken, actions that potentially can have influence, and to, to take those actions. And my suggestions, you know, you may have other suggestions or thoughts on this, but my suggestions basically are reminding the Board and encouraging the Board of items that have already been raised by others, but lending my voice to those in terms of the two issues are the pipeline generally and the compressor station that has been proposed for the Roanoke Valley, the National Rural Historic District in the Roanoke Valley. With respect to the pipeline itself, certainly seems to me that one thing the Board can do is to join together with other Boards, supervisors from the other local counties that potentially be impacted, and speak with a uniform voice, communicate with a uniform voice, the fact that the local governments in this area are not receptive to this pipeline, and certainly by joining together with the other Boards, certainly seems there's certainly much more, much more power in that than by acting alone. And you've been suggested, that's been suggested to you before, and I, I would certainly encourage that. With respect to the compressor station and one of the most, you know, beautiful and scenic and prized areas of our county, the possibility that they would build a compressor station in that area, of course, is very, very disturbing. And two things which the Board can do, I believe, concern a noise ordinance and a light ordinance, right? Both noise and light would come out of that compressor station in a manner that is incompatible with existing land uses in the, in the, in that area. I believe the Board does have power in that area, and neither noise nor light is regulated by federal statute. It's not like air emissions where you've got a Clean Air Act. There's no, you know, federal act that, that limits noise and light, which as I understand, potentially within the, within the domain of the Board to take such acts, such action. I've gone through the Mountain Valley Pipeline application materials that have been submitted to the FERC and identified items that concern noise and light, which are in, or local noise ordinance and light ordinance, which are in that document. I have it here on the paper. I'll drop it with the clerk when I'm finished. But in terms of noise, there is a federal statute, there are noise ordinances. The federal, total federal regulations states that the application should quantitatively describe existing noise levels at noise-sensitive areas such as schools, hospitals, or residences, and include any areas covered by relevant state or local noise ordinances, indicating that local noise ordinances are relevant to the, you know, to the, to the activity. And then the document further states that four of the counties that are crossed by the project, including Montgomery, prescribe noise level limits that may be applicable to the project. Table 9.2-1 provides a summary of these limits. Note that the FERC limits are much more, are more stringent than the county limits and are therefore controlling. Well, I don't know what the noise level, what the local noise limits are, I'm not aware of those, but if the FERC noise limits are more stringent, they certainly are not very stringent. In terms of light, I've searched the document, I found no information in the document that concerns light emissions from compressor stations, limitations on light, light emissions from the compressor stations, et cetera. And in terms of both noise and light, I think we can expect that the company, without any effort for, by local control, I think we can expect that the company will take action, which allows them to do whatever it is they want to do in the least expensive way possible without necessarily considering the surroundings, which of course, in that area are very, very unique and special. So, that concludes my remarks, and I thank you, and again, I'll leave this information report. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the speakers that I had, that has previously signed up to speak. If it's anyone else in the audience who'd like to address the Board, they may do so at this time. Just come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Lois Sandborn. I live at 1330 Crozier Court in Elston. I have one question, please. I'm wondering if Mr. Creed is required by the Board of Supervisors to recuse himself on these votes.
Ma'am, this is a, a public address. The Board only doesn't respond to citizens. We just listen. So, we're listening.
So, I must be out of order then, I guess?
We're listening.
Okay. Well, then, if you're listening, I would like to strongly suggest that he do recuse himself because he has such a vested interest in what is being discussed today. Thank you for listening.
And thank you. Anyone else would like to? Yes, sir. Name and address in five minutes.
I'm Philip Shepard. I live at 1331 Crozier Court. Mr. Sandborn did well to point out to us how heavy the traffic is on Crozier Court, and it's very heavy, all the way from the, from the baseball field all the way up to the school during these sports events. And I think it should be really pointed out, there's a lot of children in our area, small children. And when I drive up and down Crozier, Crozier Road, I become very tense because I'm afraid that some child is going to run out from behind those cars, and you never know. And we don't want to wait till an accident happens before we do something about it. I've heard that story too many times. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one coming forward at this time, we will close our public address, period. Next item is addendum. We...
We do not have an addendum this evening. We had the item added earlier...
It's closed meeting.
Under new business.
Yeah.
But I did want to mention to the Board that the work session item that we have listed this evening, staff would like for that to be removed. The person who was going to be here to speak on that topic is not here this evening, and so we would like to defer that to a later meeting.
Okay. Then we'll move on to old business.
We need consent agenda.
I mean, oh, yeah, I'm looking, moving too fast. Consent agenda. Thank you. I just said that, just see where y'all... Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Five lines.
We'll move on to old business. Subject A, rezoning of Gary and Linda Creed, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of approximately 2.42 acres from Agno Culture to A1 to residential R3 in the Charles Hill Magistral District.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself again that I am the owner of the property.
Do you hear a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval for the purposes of discussion. I'll second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I had a quick question. I don't know if Ms. Gibson or somebody else could answer this, is that one of the questions that was raised, and it was raised again in public address, was about the, the VDOT issue with the access road into the development. Has there been any further discussions about that or any?
Yeah, if we could, one of these two ought to be able to answer.
Good evening. Steve Simone is at Ballzer. We have had a follow-up conversation with VDOT, and it just basically reiterated our conversation a few weeks ago. We will have to do a traffic study and a traffic analysis, signal analysis at that intersection before VDOT would give a full approval of that entrance road. As part of that, at our last meeting, we had adjusted and revised our proffer statement to be sure it was clear that any new lots subdivided off there beyond the two that are there would have to front on a new road. So, that, that VDOT contingency is part of the subdivision. We can't subdivide the lots any further without that VDOT road. But again, as we said at the last meeting, until schools are back in session for a couple weeks and the traffic patterns start to become regular again, we couldn't do the traffic study in this, in this time during the summer. So, that's why we have the proffer statement as it is right now.
Okay. Thank you. And then, one more question, too, is that is the, is the owner, I know if I'm picturing it right, is that there was one lot that, kind of on the bottom right of the property, if you're kind of looking at it on the map, that might be lost if the entrance had to be, and the owner's comfortable with losing that as a, as a possible property if you had to move the exit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. 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 And then there was also some questions about the, the right-of-way with the, the access road for the two houses, homes behind there. Has there been any clarification?
Outside of the information I provided to the board a few weeks ago, that was all the deed research and digging we've done. I've not heard from, from any of the other neighbors or any, any of their representatives since that meeting of the public here in a few weeks ago.
Other questions? Thank you. No, we have a motion and a second and any further discussion?
As far as, I don't mind my, going through my thought process on this, because another board member was involved, one, I'd like to say publicly that I haven't received an email, a phone call from Mr. Creed in any way asking me one way or the other to vote one way or the other. I've tried to look at this in some ways in a high street. I've met with the, or Ms. Gibson, as well as talking with one of our planning members to discuss making sure that this is consistent with the village plan and the long-term goals for Montgomery County. And also, as somebody who is a liaison with the Planning Commission, their recommendation is something I take seriously. And also, it's unfortunate because this is Mr. Creed's district and that he owns property, and so we don't have a member of our board speaking from, from that district. All that being said, I think that this is consistent with the long-term goals for Montgomery County, and I'm going to be voting in support of it.
Well, I'm going to vote in support of it, too, because of many of the reasons that Supervisor Tuck has already stated. And I just, usually when I'm opposed to something, there are some solid reasons to be opposed, and the reasons are just not here. I know we sometimes, as citizens, we don't like change. And we don't like, I guess, further development of our neighborhoods and areas like that. I know that I've been down to some of the sporting activities at Eastern Montgomery High School, at like football games and things, and traffic is out on, I guess it's Route 11. And when they play somebody big like Floyd, that you have to walk a great distance to find a place to park. But that's a, since they've been winning some, so, I mean, when it wasn't winning, the traffic was not a problem. But I, I'm going to have to, based on what's been put in front of me, I'm going to have to vote for it in support of it. Okay, we want to call the question?
Call the question.
Okay. Will the clerk please call, roll?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
I have four ayes for approval.
So let's prove. Okay, Mr. Creed, our next item is new business. Subject A, Public Service Authority Compensation. A resolution establishing compensation for the board members of the Montgomery County Public Service Authority.
Mr. Chair, this came from discussions at the last Public Service Authority meeting in a review of salary information related to compensation for board members of the PSA and Supervisor King. I don't know if you want to say anything to that or how that came about.
I was, I was just surprised. It was mentioned to me, and I got looking into it and asked Bob to look into it for me, and it's been 41 years since compensation has increased on the PSA board. Forty-one years. And that's well behind everybody else.
And that is comparable to other?
Yeah, comparable, yeah, this compares to the rest of the board members on other boards.
Yes, sir. Do I have a motion?
Have a motion?
Have a motion, but I need a second. Have a motion and a second. Is it any discussion?
I've had some issues a little bit with, I remember the, what Mr. Frog gave us, which was, I think there were people paid anywhere from about $400 to, I think some of the lowest was $350, which would be where we're at. It's very difficult for me to say for a pay increase, and to be honest, while I was elected three years ago, I didn't know we got anything for being on the PSA and serving on that board and was, was prepared to do it as a service to the community. I do think that 41 years is a long time to go without a pay increase. I recognize that, but I'm struggling. I also understand it, because I've seen both Gary and Bill serve as chair, that it does take up a lot of time. There are meetings that have to be attended on a regular basis, sometimes during the day, sometimes at night, where the chairman is required to go to those meetings. And so I would be, you know, obviously this addresses some of it, like getting $400 towards the chairman. But I, again, I have some difficulty in saying Chris Tuck deserves a pay raise when he was thinking he was going to be doing it for free.
Other comments? I think we had a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call, roll?
Mr. Gabriel?
No.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
No.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Three ayes, two noes.
Now, what does that mean, Mr. Attorney?
Means it's approved.
Oh, okay.
With us being so shorthanded, I was thinking that that's still...
You don't need, you only need a majority of the quorum. That would be very good.
Okay. Moving on, County Attorney's Report.
Excuse me?
Oh, no, we have one other.
Oh, we have a new item to put on. Okay.
I was moving on.
Yeah, right away. Is moving on. The...
I would move that we, move to abandon the right-of-way.
Oh, rapid, yeah.
There's an ordinance that's in our package. You could just do a motion.
Move to adopt. Move to adopt the ordinance.
I'm sorry.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Would the clerk please call, roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
I have no report, Mr. Chair.
No report. County Administrator's Report.
Mr. Chair, the only item I wanted to bring to the board's attention this evening is I did include some information in your packet regarding a request from a group of citizens who asked that we consider renaming or designating, I should say, a portion of Route 177, which is Tyler Avenue, from the interstate into the city of Radford, to designate that as the Radford Vietnam Veterans Memorial Highway. I passed that information along to the city manager in Radford to see what his thoughts were. Included that in the packet as well. They didn't have any objection to that, although as I've talked with a couple of board members about this, I do think that if this is something the board desires, that maybe a more appropriate designation would be the Montgomery County Vietnam Veterans Highway or the Montgomery County slash Radford Vietnam Veterans Memorial Highway. But in any case, I wanted to make you aware of it, number one, and number two, see if there was any direction the board would like to offer to me in terms of discussing this with VDOT.
I just, I just have one question. I, generally, I don't have an issue with this. I was wondering, however, if we might consider, A, I think including Montgomery County is a very good idea and very appropriate for that specific location. The second is that I wonder if we could broaden it and simply, instead of being specifically Vietnam veterans, it's just be a veterans highway. I mean, we have many veterans in this area from more recent conflicts than Vietnam, and not to denigrate, of course, the service of those who've served in Vietnam, but also just simply to honor the others who have, who have served as well.
I sort of agree with Matt because when I first looked at that, the Radford Vietnam veterans, well, I'm a Vietnam veteran, and I'm Montgomery County. And I'm sitting there like, well, why can't we do it in honor of all veterans? And I guess make it, I guess veterans from World War II, period. That would include World War I, World War II, you know, Vietnam, Korean conflict and...
Desert Storm.
Desert Storm, all the rest of it. Why don't we, if it's the direction that we give a county administrator, why don't we let him float that back to the group that sent the letter and see what they think about it?
And I appreciate that suggestion. One of our policy has been, and we've talked about this before, our policy has been if someone requests a road be designated with a certain name, that if that designation is granted, the requesting party pays for the signage as well. So I do think it's very appropriate to float it back to the folks that requested it to see if that is something that's acceptable to them. Also, just float it back to the city of Radford and say, this is what our board has suggested. What are your thoughts on that? And just see if we can find consensus among the group, and I'll certainly keep you updated on what I hear.
It might be at some point, and this might be later on, is bringing in the, maybe even reaching out to the Corps of Cadets at Virginia Tech, because they might want to be involved. And if they're paying for signage, they might be willing to help out.
And Radford has a Corps or a...
They have an RTC.
Yeah.
Okay. But thank you.
And it might be, you know, some, there's a VFW in Radford, and there might be some, some organizations that would help with that sign, because a matter of fact, I was in the VFW two or three weeks ago in Radford. I mean, it even existed there, and they've got a lot of veterans memorial, you know, from World War II and I won, and they're small posts, but they're pretty active.
Mr. Chair, that's all I had this evening.
Supervisor Creed? Supervisor King?
Just something small. I want to thank Ms. Louise and her friends coming from Old Sirewood to our meeting tonight. I appreciate y'all coming out, and that's all.
Supervisor Tuck?
A couple of things. Well, one, I attended a pipeline or information meeting, or anti-pipeline information meeting over in Blacksburg, and there were a couple of ideas that they asked me to ask our board to take into consideration. One is, and this is something that Craig is kind of already at least putting some feelers out, is to see if we will be willing to meet with other boards of supervisors in Giles, Roanoke County, Craig County, potentially Franklin County, and ourselves, and joint meeting to discuss the pipeline, and that's something I think is worth looking into. And in doing so, hopefully open up avenues and communications. The other is, it's something that was brought up tonight, which is in regards to potentially in agricultural areas where we're going to have potentially an industrial use being a compressor station. Talking with Marty, maybe running something through the Planning Commission to talk about light and noise ordinances. I do have some concerns. I don't want it to be, a farmer can't run his tractor in an agricultural area because a baler makes a lot of noise, especially when one of those roundbells pops out. But at the same time, addressing some of the light and noise that might stem from an industrial use being out in a, in agricultural area is something that we could at least talk with Marty and run through the Planning Commission at the board.
What I'd say is that I know Craig is, is communicating with the Roanoke County Administrator, Clay Goodman, the Craig County Administrator, Chris...
McCarty.
McCarty from Giles County.
And Rick.
So we're trading ideas, I mean, for the sake of just meeting, our group meeting with that group with no specific agenda, because the things that we're doing, they're doing, the things that they're doing, we're doing, and so...
And I brought that up. I even brought up the fact that Craig had talked with some of the folks from Nelson County.
Right.
Because they're dealing with the Atlantic Coast Pipeline and dealing with some potentially loss of revenues for recreational areas that are going to be impacted if the pipeline goes through that area. But this is something that group asked if we would consider doing.
If it was, I guess, probably in an arena to where our federal legislators probably could come, you know, to address the group or to address, answer questions or something along those lines, and what ideas they may have, that would be, I guess, a meeting of purpose. But as far as just meeting to meet...
I agree. I'm not a big believer in having a meeting for meetings.
How you guys feel about that? Yeah, you find either way?
Either way, yeah. I mean, would we have to advertise if more than two gets together?
Oh, it'd be a, it'd be a big advertisement.
It'd be a big, it'd be a huge meeting. You'd probably have to have it in some, yeah, some high school or something, somewhere.
As long as it's open to the public, I'm good.
Yeah, it's going to be open to the public.
And then would anybody have objections from Marty looking into light ordinances and perhaps referring it to the Planning Commission to see if that's something we can address? I've thought it through. Yes, this would apply, but the compressor station will already be built.
That's right. You want it to put it, but you want it, you know, before.
Before. So I'd like to try to get it, if we get that ball rolling, if there's at least some support for it, to at least take it into consideration.
Yeah, because I don't, I mean, I want people living around a whole bunch of noise and lighting that they couldn't bear, you know. Okay.
The final thing is, I had the opportunity to meet with our former chairman. Unfortunately, he was down at UVA Hospital. Jim Politis, as some of you may know, was chairman for several years and served on the board for, I think it was 16 years total. He has had to have open heart surgery. Part of his heart is not functioning properly and is now being assisted by a pump. He is tough. He is not taking any narcotics and has only taken Tylenol to deal with pain. And while he was, he seemed to be in very good spirits, and he is on the list for a transplant. And so we're hopeful, and our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family.
And we thank you Supervisor Tuck for going to visit him and bringing us up to date. I try to tell you guys, this job is tough. Supervisor Gabriel?
No report.
Slept up to May, and was that rain that we heard?
I just received a notice that the severe thunderstorm warning had been canceled, so whatever that was made its way through here pretty quick.
Okay, we are adjourned.